Work session to order Wednesday, September 2nd, the time is 1:00 P. M. And I'm going to open it up for visitor comments.
We do have a visitor comment from Patrick. I'm going to turn on his video. And Patrick, you may have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. First, I want to begin just by complimenting Shana and Gretchen for hosting and coordinating a meeting of a number of people in the community, including the school district and childcare providers and other others regarding how the recreation program can support families during this time, especially as we begin a school year unlike any other school year. But they just they did a tremendous job, and I think it really is a great service they're providing to our community. Now, my main comments concern Halloween Town. And I've been thinking about this ever since last month's meetings. I did have an opportunity to meet with Tina Curry personally to talk about Halloween Town plans, and then have been following discussions in today's our edition of the Chronicle. And I think one thing I, as far as Tina's plan for the ticketed events, I think that she's developing a plan that is trying to take into account all of the important considerations regarding public health and safety. My concern is, though, that beyond what she has been contracted to do, the city itself has a positive obligation to do more to protect public health and safety beyond the times of the ticketed events. And I would encourage that the city makes, again, I don't know what has may have changed in since the last meeting, or even the county commissioners meeting of last week. But I hope that if the city has not initiated coordination, positively coordinating with Columbia County, the commissioners with community, public health, and other related agencies, it really needs to do so. I think that the city, beyond the media outlets provided by Tina through the spirit of Halloween Town webpage and the and the Facebook page, that the city needs to reach out officially to local, regional, state, and perhaps even national media outlets to let people know that Halloween Town is not going to be what it has been in previous years. And again, beyond what is happening when the plaza perhaps is closed for the events, that the city needs to publicly and prominently display both on its media and through things like signs, very clear guidelines about what expectations are for things such as public distancing, mask wearing and that. And finally, that the city does have some kind of plan to ensure that, again, beyond the ticketed events times, especially on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday and other times, that there is some plan to respond to potential, and of course, we all hope nothing does occur, potential violations and of these public health and safety procedures, and making sure that we can protect the health and safety of our citizens. So I am not calling for the end to Halloween Town at this point in time, but I do think the city, again, beyond what it has asked Mrs. Curry to do, has an obligation to be more proactive in ensuring that our citizens are kept healthy and safe. Thanks.
Patrick? John Walsh, would you like to help me a little bit on that, just as far as we're just doing the ticketed events, no major events?
Yeah, that'd be, if that's appropriate, yeah, I will. So, yeah, the Halloween safety plan is a very, it's got a lot of attention. We're equally concerned about having an event that complies with all the governor's orders and guidance and being serious about that. And not only just in the, during the high peak hours on the weekends, which are Saturdays and Sundays, but throughout the event and removing, we're not doing some things like the Festival of Fairies and all the touch points that have high contact and things people are touching. It's more hands-off type types of activities that are not crowd centric. Pumpkin lighting is generally very diffuse this year. They're turning it on one time, and it'll just be on the rest of the time. So we won't have those concentrations. We have a number of hand wash stations, the automatic dispensers that you put the stuff on your handles, like you see around. There's several of those. We have been communicating with our partners as far as help in the county and those folks, and really trying to work on the parking issue to, so we don't get overrun in the neighborhoods to have, encourage people to park in the parking lot. So the ticket before where the parking and the ticket were separate, now it is that, you know, the parking's included on the parking lot. So I suspect there are still people that are going to want to come, that are going to want to take over those spots by the neighbors, not use the parking lot during the week. But usually, that crowd's pretty, you know, confused and consistent. I mean, there's people here pretty much daylight to dark, but it's never more than 20, 30 people in the plaza at once, and even in the crowded years during the weeks.
Okay, I just wanted to touch base a little bit on that. If you have anything else to add, I just know that for us, we're not, we talked to Tina about this last meeting was there was no major events, no parades of any kind, no pumpkin lighting like in years past. It's ticketed events. So yes, the decorations will be set up probably for photo ops for the few people that do come through at random. And usually, in years past, other than the major events, it's a little bit of a flow of about maybe 50 to 100 people tops getting pictures in and out at, at most, at most, so.
Mayor, are you aware that yesterday the governor extended the no meeting, I think it's no large meetings until November?
It's actually, she did the state of emergency. We're still in phase two, which allows 250 to a special event because of COVID.
She extended it, thank you.
It's November 3rd, so it will be over in November 4th, right after the election. I've seen that comment made a lot.
That's another good point, is that, you know, we're intending to be responsive to whatever the governor's orders. If they change, we will change life right along with them. If it needs to be shut down, we'll shut it down.
And that was, that council census is if public safety becomes an issue, we have no problem pulling the plug immediately, so. But there is definitely a very well thought out plan behind this. Okay, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to set that at ease, because I did see a little bit of traction on the Chronicle website. And wanted to give you the opportunity, John, to speak on that. Okay, so any other visitor comments? You see any map?
No public comments.
Okay, so with that, we're going to review proposed rate increase for waste management drop box services.
Okay, this is one of those fee increases that we're and it says the metal drop boxes for construction and things like that, that you see around town. They have a franchise agreement to give them with the city. And part of that franchise agreement, we dropped, adopted a key increase schedule, and it's one half of this consumer price index. And it's essentially kind of a passer. There's not a lot to say about it. It would be in violation of our franchise agreement if we didn't pass this through. This year, it is literally just a few pennies, 0.76 percent is half the CPI. And get my hands on it if there's any questions. So when it comes to the council for for consideration, there should be an opportunity for the public to comment on it, because any fee change, not an increase or decrease, requires an opportunity for the public to comment on. That should be on for tonight.
Yep, okay. So that was not too painful, and it sounds like it's very miniscule.
Yeah, it's literally three cents on some of the cans or containers.
That's a county thing, correct? Is that a county or?
No, that's our agreement between the city and Waste Management.
Waste Management, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not us setting the rates, it's the Waste Management setting the rates.
Waste Management, but they have to look through the process because it's within our, our mountain, our area, basically.
But is it already, does it all collate to tipping fees?
I'm having a hard time. Hey Ginny, can you turn up your microphone on your computer? Because we're having a hard time hearing you.
Maybe.
He said maybe, I heard that.
So when we adopted the franchise agreement with Waste Management, it prescribed the process for fee increases. So it is one half of the consumer price index for the previous year. So every year, we do a little up and down incremental change. It's about that simple.
Okay, I see Jacob is on here. Ginny, I think he answered your question there, okay? So we're going to go ahead and jump down to number three on our agenda. We're going to do discussion on city-owned property list. Not Jacob and Sue. Boy, this is a joint effort here.
Yeah, give me one second to get Jacob and Sue's video going.
Yep.
And Jacob and Sue, you might have to unmute yourself as well.
There they are.
All right. So John, did you want to mention anything before we kind of jump into this?
I hadn't signed on it.
No, that's okay. Yeah, I guess I'll just preface that this was one of the items that was discussed by city council to review as part of our strategic plan. About a month or so ago, I gave each councillor a copy of this city map that was done by Jacob and highlighted all the property that was owned by the city, as well as a list that was populated by Sue Nelson and nicely color coded with all different kinds of categories for every piece of property and what they mean. She also specifically highlighted properties that may be open to development if the city council chooses. So this is that opportunity for the city council to ask any questions of Jacob and Sue as far as any of the properties, if the city council wants to discuss selling anything, or at least marketing them out to sell. And I see councillor Martin is just getting on.
Perfect. We'll go ahead and go through this, these couple of reports in a row, and then we'll come to the parks, okay? So anybody have any discussion on this? Any questions for Sue, Jacob? I guess that's what they're here for. It's nice having an inventory of all the properties and being able to see the parks and the developables and the where sanitary sewer storm has easements and pumps and all kinds of stuff. Is that correct, Sue?
Yeah, pretty much. You'll see there's, most of the property that we own is being used for something, but there are several parcels that are developable. Some of them are just buildable lots within the city. Some of them may require other.
I was kind of curious on the Castor Road. I noticed there's a bunch of little lots already. Is that because they were previously houses on that Castor Road? Is that why they're like that, Sue?
On which the
Well, I noticed there's a lot of little chunks. Is that our?
Yeah, it's just the way it was originally platted, so there's a lot of individual tax lots that make up that whole parcel.
There used to be about 10 houses down that road, and eventually
Yeah.
they ate fish or Boise bottom up, so they could, especially when they had the strike, could push everybody out.
Right. Yeah, I don't know where those houses were. I know that there used to be houses along there, but I don't know where they were specifically located, but it's just the way that it was platted and, you know, potentially or divided at some point. Jacob may have additional information on the history of the formation of those lots, but yeah, I just had the map.
Yeah, Mayor, basically, the mill property is composed of several parcels from a long time ago. In fact, in digging through our files, I found a map from the 1960s that shows the conglomerate of properties that the mill, the mill property was before they started taking in those smaller lots with the houses on it. So because it's such a large size and the old land divisions, the way it was platted, lots of record, you do have a variety of lines. And, and there's some public rights of way shown in there, too. Castor Road is a right of way. Of course, that's developed, but there's some weird ones in there as well. For example, if you look at the one that's kind of shaped like a devil's fork, no pun intended, that's undeveloped right of way. And we kind of talk about that in our parcelization plan about, you know, what rights of way have the potential to be vacated. Some have utilities in them and are less eligible, but it's just, it's just part of the soup.
Okay.
Jacob? Does any of these, we'll say, developable plots possibly have a use by the city to put a road in or something, or enlarge a road? If so, were they highlighted, or is it just a developable lot?
The, the city-owned properties table does have a category for road slash parking, and so if it's highlighted in gray.
Where shit, what y'all do?
Hey, that was one of our Zoom bombers.
I apologize, that was my text message going off.
Oh, that was me.
I have muted my phone, and I will change my text ringtone.
That wasn't me talking. So Topaz, does that, councillor Topaz, does that answer your question?
No, I was wondering, you know, we see possible development for the city and roads and a lot of things. Is any of the private, quote, "developable" lots targeted for city use in some future time?
Some are, if you look at our adopted plans, and I'll talk about that some tonight for the Mlar property zone change. And some are just kind of there. And I think that's part of this exercise is to educate the council, engage the council to look at our properties and to consider those kind of things. I know some properties need to have right of way dedication because a road goes through them. For example, the property famously now known as Jacob's Mountain has some of that, and that's some tidying up that we'll need to do in the future.
And we had talked about tidying that up ourselves, of course.
Yes, yeah, we own it, so of course, we have the initiative.
Because we know the uniqueness of that layout of that property.
Yeah, I was thinking of some of the properties possibly along the connector system that are going to end up being a road or enlargement of the road. Have we bought properties with that in mind, or is it just developable properties?
We have questions. We've bought that 13th Street Y-shaped house, which we rent right now for the potential of a turnabout right there on 12th Street.
Yeah, so when we worked on those plans, the most recent one being the Riverfront Connector, part of the design considered what the city owned, one, and two, the available right of way. There are some places where our ownership gives flexibility, for example, down by the wastewater treatment plant and the property formerly known as the veneer property. You know, there's some extra room there that we own to work with. I know that was your favorite part of the plan, too.
I think I agree with councillor Topaz on that issue. I think part of that bluff on that down there by the Waste Management, at least 10 foot of it needs to come back, widen that road and add a sidewalk.
Do you have a special category? Is it just in here? I was wondering if you would put a special category in those properties.
There are some gray ones, he said, highlighted in that.
Yeah, the gray ones are mostly ones that are currently being used for roadways. And there is not a special category for potential future roadways. It's just a parcel that can be, some of them are large, some of them are standard city-sized lots. So there's not a specific location or a specific identifier that indicates this could be used for right of way, because most of them are larger parcels where portions of them would most likely be dedicated as right of way, such as the veneer property, where we have to do right of way in order to develop that property.
I was wondering also if we have a master plan where we would like to buy property if it ever comes up for sale. That was the other thought in the city-owned property. We have a master plan. We want to put a big road over there, and we quietly like to buy the properties over the next 20 years. If anything comes up for sale, we could take it then. That was, that was a plan ahead question, if you will.
And that's, that's a great question, and, and that's why we have a comprehensive plan and the variety of things that we've adopted. And one of the things I'm going to talk about tonight for the Mlar Zone property is that a comprehensive plan talks about obtaining properties for future parks as far in advance as possible. And, and so that's one example. And then, given our transportation plans, you know, if we see a street going through there, like the Mlar Road property where it shows a north-south collector, if we own that, it certainly gives us one foot ahead to make sure some type of connector happens.
Thank you.
I got a question for Jacob or Sue. There's a large parcel just north of Campbell Park, a few blocks. What is that?
That we don't own or that we own?
That's a designated wetland that was dedicated to the city when the parent property was partially developed as a subdivision, maybe 10-ish years ago.
Oh, yeah, I see. Yep. So, and we have a lot of these, and it comes up once in a while. So when we do a subdivision, when we're taking a piece of land and we're dividing it into four or more lots, and we have one of these dang wetlands, right, these dang city wetlands that everybody loves. What our code says is that those wetland areas are not supposed to be part of lots, but they're supposed to be in dedicated tracks who's going to go to a responsible entity, be it the homeowners association, if there is one, some type of conservation agency, or the city. And in the last several years, our typical stance has been, well, if it's not going to be a lot of new maintenance, we can't take them, although because of the, the maintenance burden, we're careful about what we take. This is an example where it was deeded to the city.
So that's a big parcel. Is the whole thing a wetland, or is there some developable for a little pocket park, or what's the capabilities there?
It's all wetland.
It's, it's all wetland. Now, if you remember several years ago, there was another one of those situations where, so when you take, now, someone who develops a property wants to get as many lots out of it as they can. And so in no case are one of these tracks dedicated to where there's really much extra developable property under those circumstances, because lots means money, and that helps make it pencil. But we did have an example with a similar wetland tract that was adjacent to the south side of Campbell Park. And if you look at the geometry of Campbell Park, it has this little boot shape on the southwest corner, the lower right part, and that was an addition. It was from several years ago, but that was, it was developed. The city ended up taking it over, and we made that a formal part of Campbell Park. Of course, it's, it's wetland, so, you know, you can't just fill it and put a sports facility there, but it does have an open space trail potential. And I know that the neighbors, you know, enjoy that wetland, and conceivably, one of these large tracks could have a public purpose. I would guess in this case, the limitation is access.
Yeah, because that piece is kind of landlocked now.
It's totally landlocked, yeah.
And nowadays, this was a little bit before my time, we're pretty adamant about making sure we have clear access to any property or to any track regardless of who owns it, because I think that's, it was a little overlooked in the past.
Okay, well, I think it's good if anybody is out there listening and would like to look at this map, especially like on developable properties that the city owns. We are always open for somebody making a decent proposal on a chunk of property, and of course, we'll have to have it assessed for the value. But one clear one is when we removed our storm pump over on South Town. Is that correct, Sue?
Yep, South Town Street. There's two lots over there.
Yeah, and I know there's duplexes right next to it on one side and apartment complexes on the other side of it, so. Yeah.
Now, I do have an update on one of those potentially developable parcels.
Okay.
And this is one that has been discussed previously by the Greystone Estates subdivision.
Yep.
The giant pile of dirt subdivision that was famously known as for a while. Luckily, that's turned into more of a actually developed subdivision. So I was not here last time, but John presented it, and the developer proposed a value of a buck sixty per square foot based on the total price they paid for the property, which is now the Greystone Estates subdivision, as well as the amount of expense that went into developing it.
Yep.
So the appraisal that we, we got very recently talks about a value of $7 per square foot. And I've been communicating with Ken Leahy, the owner and developer about it, and one of the things he said, he doesn't, he does want it to be fair. Right now, it's landlocked.
Yep.
And as, and as part of the subdivision, one of the conditions was to make sure we have some type of access to that. So their, their feeling is that that's, that's shooting high. And they kind of gave me a breakdown of, you know, the, the price they paid, and then they're kind of figuring between, oh, the fill, and there was a lot of fill, if you remember how big that mound of dirt was, and then relocating the sewer, rock excavation of around $2 million. And so one of the considerations they have is that, you know, there's this value, but there was a whole lot of expense that went into that subdivision, and this could be added to that. And so this is an opportunity to continue that discussion, given And so, this is an opportunity to continue that discussion, given the appraisal, given what the developer says. Now, I, I just sent the basis for the appraisal to the developer this morning and so they haven't looked at it and gone, wow, God, maybe you're right. So that's one thing we don't have yet, but this is an opportunity to see how the council feels about that. I do see some value adding it to the subdivision because it would, it would make one of those lots, commercial lots, larger and it would be kind of a funky commercial lot on its own. And so, I mean, and you have to look at value, I, I understand that. But of course, as a planner, I look at land use patterns too. And then, well, what kind of weird use is that approximate 10,000 square foot lot going to accommodate? And it's, and it's commercial too, so the residential options are pretty limited.
Well, they're saying, so basically, they're saying 70 grand if you're saying 10,000 per foot law at 7,000 or $7 per foot is $70,000.
That's what our appraisal came back with.
And they were trying to get it for 16.
Yeah, big difference.
Yeah, big difference.
I, I guess at this point, just to help keep things efficient, is, does the council, I mean, are you hell bent on the appraisal? Or is there any consideration for the, the opportunity that is next to the subdivision and the value of expenses to negotiate that value?
I feel them because I just went through this process. Everybody knows, is familiar that I went through the public hearing process of vacating the road and actually building a street. And I know what I paid for those versus what they are valued now. It was, it was a development cost that increased them two-thirds of the value. So what is two-thirds of 70 or one-third of 70? I mean, that was originally what it was worth. I don't know. In my opinion, from, and probably most developers would say and agree with what I found true to be on my, my lots was that the dirt originally was only worth one-third of the value. Once I developed, two-thirds of, that was an increase of two-thirds of the value of the property, once it was divided up and storm and water and power and all that was in place. So I hear what they're saying. It's frustrating to have it appraised after the work's done.
Well, it's not going to go anyplace. I think you keep on negotiating until we finally come to an agreement. I don't think we're pressured right now to do it, that it's not going.
We, we kind of are because they want to actually start developing and Ken Leahy is not a little penny developer, Councilor Topaz, and, and we need to be business friendly and we get that bad rap. So we need to actually make a decision on this fairly soon. It's not something we just sit on.
Well, just say $80,000 and leave it at that and see how it goes. It's above the appraisal, but it's a discussion point.
You, you got to be fair. You can't go over appraisal, Councilor Topaz.
Why can't he? He can come back with his number and we can discuss.
I hear you here, but this is not a you decision, this is a we decision.
I, I know, but as I say, I'll start off discussing and obviously it's going to go back and forth a number of times.
All I know is Ken Leahy is very well, all I know is Ken Leahy is very well respected throughout Oregon as a developer and that we definitely need to try to sit down and get this deal worked out.
I agree on that, that's true.
Well, and if I could add, add a point is that there, it's piercing in my mind and probably Jacob's as well, is that there's a public interest in having that be a contiguous parcel, have one unified development, rather, one little holdout donut hole that gets developed in who knows what in the future.
And value, value has a lot of stuff, you know, there's money signs and then there's all these things that are hard to measure. But from a public benefit standpoint, that's what we always have to think about, you know, public, the public, right? The public interest. And tonight, there's a discussion about incorporating these properties into the urban renewal district and a larger commercial property certainly has more potential than a smaller one. And so, how do you put a value on that? I don't know, but there's still a public benefit, given its inclusion in the subdivision.
That's what I thought is it's, it's going to add more for potential future development. We have lots of properties sitting around vacant and I know that our citizens want more development, more jobs. And so if we can help facilitate that, I think that we need to do that as long as it's fair.
So, and we don't have to figure out a number right now, but right now, Councilor Topaz suggests that we go up. And I just want to gauge, you know, are you neutral? Do you want to go up? Or is there flexibility to maybe decrease that?
Jacob, before we go there, the council doesn't have the full appraisal in hand, so and they don't, they have the methodology that the appraisers are used. Because he actually started off on a considerably higher number and discounted it for the bill already, but to get down to a $7 number, the developer feels like if he put a number of four feet of bill on it, the developer thinks it's, what, you know, it's more than four feet, you know, the, the cost is higher than that, he's going to come up even more than four feet. So there's, there's additional costs. That's where he's, I think that's the increment that he's trying to negotiate about.
So we should have a, a very good discussion on this by our next meeting because we will be getting a copy of that appraisal here soon.
Yeah, yeah, literally, we just got it. So I, and it was just timely with discussion and I felt if I put it out to, to you at the 11th hour, that would be criticized and I just wanted to talk about it generally, but we certainly will get you the full copy of it.
Okay, yeah, thanks, John. That's a good clarification. Obviously, we don't want to make vacant decisions blind.
Okay, so any other discussion on city-owned property for either council? Okay, not seeing any beans I got you here, Jacob. I'm going to get, we're going to just do the discussion of the partition related to the St. Helens Place Apartments, okay?
Yeah, sure. So I would like to be able to share my screen.
Give me one second, Jacob. Okay, you should have the ability to share your screen now.
There you go.
Okay, so here's the memo. We're just, this is information to help you understand what we're asking you to authorize the mayor's signature at the regular session tonight. And so I just wanted to tell the story with a few exhibits and slides. So the first one, let's go back in time, almost two years. This is standing in the middle of Matson Street, facing east, looking down what today is known as Brayden Street. You can see this little building in the background that is the Motel 6 Violet's Villa. So pretend that you're standing here and that you're closing your eyes, you're walking forward a little bit and you're turning to the north and you open your eyes and all of a sudden, you know, about a year and a half has gone through and whoa, God, look at this. There's a street there and apartments and landscaping. So this is, this is Brayden Street right here. This is the north side of Brayden Street, as you can see, the apartments and some landscaping. And this little walkway here is important to point out because you're, you may be thinking, well, that's a weird place for a walkway. Why would you put it there? And the council had a zone change on this a little while ago. And if you recall, they were going through that because they wanted a storage facility related to these apartments on the other side of Brayden. Now, so now I'm going to walk up to where the elk is, turn around to look at the other side of the street. And that walkway is actually to go across the street to this property here where the storage facilities are proposed to be built. And the reason I'm talking about this is this partition that we're looking for the mayor to sign is related to these storage units. So here's a brief illustration of that building, kind of looks like the apartment buildings with the little, with some of these rough features. That's what's going to go there. And then if we, if we look at the site plan, so here's the site plan and that elk landscaping and that mid-block crossing is about right here. So here's the lot. Basically, they're going to build the building there and it gets us more sidewalks and furniture improvements. And the reason that we need the signature is because of this little tiny, tiny, tiny piece right here. That's only one foot wide on one side. There's some right of way dedication and we need the city council to accept that right of way. The, the street kind of curves into that a little bit. So the, the, the reason for the signature is pretty minute, but I always like to tell the story so you have the context. But that's it, unless you have any questions.
No, what a drastic change that place had, huh? Go back to the original picture, there you go.
Yeah, from that to that.
Yep. Looks good.
So FYI.
Yeah. Go ahead. Go ahead, Jacob. You said FYI?
Oh yeah, that's just for your information for tonight, unless you have any more questions, I'm done.
All right. Okay, now we're going to come back to number two on our list. Council President Morton is back and we're going to do a public work in Parks Department's semi-annual report to Nelson.
Hello. I'm not sure if Matt is going to put the slides up. Okay.
Yep, hang on one second.
No worries. And Councilor Martin, I'm glad you, you made it.
All right, I apologize and thank you for delaying it for my convenience. I appreciate that very much.
Oh, okay, so, I, okay. Matt, I was going to do those a little bit later and I didn't know if you were going to put the report, the PowerPoint up. That's in the packet.
I can pull that up, give me 15 seconds.
Unless you want me to share mine.
Why don't I have you share yours? That way you can control the presentation.
Ah, okay.
So hang on one second.
To figure out which way to do this.
Unless you want me to.
Don't worry, yeah, but either way, whichever is easiest for you.
You are now a co-host, so you should be able to share your screen.
Okay. Find the right one as I have a million of them up. I think you got my PowerPoint now? Okay, awesome. So yeah, I'm just going to give a brief overview of some of the projects we've been working on so far this year, starting out with our Public Works mission statement. So we all have a mission statement. We do try to keep this in mind throughout our activities, but basically, our mission is to enhance and sustain the livability and quality of life for our citizens in the community of St. Helens by working efficiently and effectively to fulfill the goals as set by the city council and the Public Works Director. Specifically, in our strategic action plan, we have projects that are identified in three of the strategic plan goals, goal number three, goal number four, and goal number five. So those are all highlighted in the, the action plan reports that are now, thanks to Matt, on the website attached to the strategic plan. They're also included in this packet. So cruise through those. Let's see if I can get this to go to the next one. All right.
I just have a question for you.
Yes.
To get the block of people off to the side here, so we can just see her full PowerPoint presentation instead of seeing our faces on the left, the right side. How would she do that, Matt?
Oh, Sue, if you hit F5, I believe it is, to actually start the slideshow, you're still in the PowerPoint mode, which is fine. If you actually start the slideshow, I think it's F5 or you can go click on slideshow and start show.
How's that?
He wants our faces to go away, so our screen will be bigger and we can actually read it.
Okay. Does that work better for you like that?
It's still not, no, I wasn't trying to make it bigger, Matt. I was just trying to get our faces off because you have a way of getting us off, off the screen, Matt.
Um, I cannot do that. That's a view and picture thing with Zoom.
Upper right-hand corner, there's a swap screen and make the.
Yeah, you can change your view on your computer.
We've had presentations.
Just switch out of side-by-side mode.
It will just put it on top.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that, you got it?
Sure.
It's better.
Okay.
All right.
Can everybody see something?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty, we're going to go on to the next slide. So as we, we discussed this a little bit in the, the State of the City report, but Public Works takes care of a lot of infrastructure and none of that infrastructure shrinks over time. It just continues to grow. Every new development that we have adds storm drains, adds sewers, adds water lines, adds streets, sidewalks, everything, and we still maintain all of that. So that's just a summary basically of what we, what we have right now. So several of the projects that are planned for this particular year, the, the sidewalks on North Vernonia are coming here really soon. We just opened bids on that on tonight's agenda. There is the award of the bid for that project. We were really happy with the bids that we got. It was really competitive and we, we got quite a few of submissions turned in, so it was really nice to see good interest in this project. We also are working on another sidewalk project that should be built next spring or summer, and that is through the Safe Routes to School Grant Project. That will be a sidewalk on one side of Columbia Boulevard between Gable and Sykes Road. That road is still a county road, so the county is working with us on that particular project. They are going to be replacing a large culvert as part of this project so that we don't build a sidewalk and then they come and tear out part of it so that they can put their culvert in. But they, they've been planning on doing that culvert. It's the Columbia Boulevard Crossing. If you guys remember the big culvert that washed out last year on, well, I guess it was more like a year and a half ago, on Gable Road, the, the great big one down there at the corner. Does everybody remember when that washed out? So it's a, it's a contributing culvert into that same system. So they'll be replacing that. So we were really fortunate to get the grant to do the Safe Routes to School. That was another great grant application by Jenny Dimshoe and Planning Department, our associate planner. She just does a fantastic job with those. So we're excited to get that one. It's in the design stage right now. We're also working on updating the master plans for our storm and sanitary sewer systems. The storm, last time the master plan for the storm system was updated was in 1999, so it is definitely due. The sanitary sewer, I don't even want to tell you how long ago it was that that was last updated. It is many decades old now. We are also working on doing some more water main replacements. We try to systematically go through and select areas that are either experiencing more than average problems or as far as leaks and having to do a lot of repairs or places where the water mains are undersized or that we need to interlink them to other mains. So we're working on that project, which should be bid out probably in the early part of 2021. We also will be doing an overlay, we hope, we'll be doing an overlay on Gable Road on the east side of the highway. If you've driven that, you've noticed that there's a little bit of asphalt starting to unravel. We want to try to capture that before it gets too bad. It just, it's going to be an expensive project. bad. It just, it's going to be an expensive project and funds for roadwork are extremely limited, so we're hoping we can at least get an overlay in there or an inlay potentially, where we just pave the, the actual wheel paths. And we also, next year, will be starting on the Water Master Plan, update on that. That's also been about 10 years now, and we've had a lot changed in our, on our water system, so we want to get that updated. Some of the highlights in the Public Works Department so far, and I, I also want to stress that just because there's a project listed in the budget, which most of those are, I specifically identified project, that's not all that Public Works does. They're out there every day just, you know, fixing a leak in a water line or cleaning out a sewer, TVing a storm drain, sweeping the streets. They do so much work just on a daily basis that it, it's, it's impossible to capture everything that they do all year long. But some of the stuff that we have been doing so far, just in this year, we've been working with the county, basically finished the Gable Road Improvement Project. That is, you'll see that there's still a little bit of landscaping that needs to be done and some cleanup out there. Again, it's a county project because that portion of Gable Road belongs to the county, but the city's been a co-project manager with the county throughout the whole entire project. We've participated in all of the onsite project progress meetings with the contractor and just walked alongside them throughout the whole thing. So we're excited to see that project come to completion, and once everything is complete, then the county will start the process to turn the jurisdiction of that road over to the city. So you'll probably be seeing that in an upcoming council meeting. We've also completed the waterline upgrades on three streets, and along with that, we, we installed a large culvert through a section of open ditch on North 11th Street where we usually every winter get complaints on some flooding, so we hope that that will alleviate some of those issues on that road. We completed a medium-sized sanitary sewer point repair project where we replaced several hundred feet of sewer, replaced or repaired over a dozen manholes. I think there were 15 total on that project. We put out the North Vernonia Sidewalk Project out to bid. As I mentioned, that's up to award on the evening agenda. We've also done the plans and specifications for a small storm drain project on South 14th Street. That is also up to award at the evening agenda tonight. And we, our Public Works Crew specifically completed a portion of the new Fifth Street Trail, and they built the boardwalk that goes over the wetland portion of that, and it turned out just beautifully. So they should be really proud of the work that they've done on those types of projects. Our city crews have done a whole bunch of little storm drain extensions. We try to do these all throughout the year where we have underserved areas where we can extend the existing system to help serve the, the properties a little bit better. We're also now working on an ADA ramp improvement project, and as you can see, a lot of these projects are being done in-house. We're not using outside services for, for quite a few of these, and that's, you know, these all take a lot of time, and there's just really two of us here working on all these projects. As far as project management and design and putting out the plans and bidding them and, and the, the whole, whole kit and caboodle. I don't know if you guys have been over to Campbell Park, but the existing tennis courts and the basketball court are now gone. We're working on getting bids for the new sport courts installation over there. And then if you've driven around town, you've noticed all the bright white and yellow lines on the road, so we just had a contractor come in and finish the street striping project. Are there any questions on any of those projects?
I had a question, and I don't know if there's an appropriate way to ask the question. I haven't had a chance to go out and look at it with my own eyes, but I did get that email from a, a resident on North Vernonia that described a sidewalk as being in his yard and that it wouldn't have to have a handrail because they'd fall into the ditch. And I know the roadway, right-of-way is super wide and it's not actually in somebody's yard.
It's not.
If you can talk to about what that looks like, how we plan that around, and what the coordination of effort for not widening the street and just adding in the sidewalk right now.
Right. Yeah, so. Yeah, none of the sidewalk's going to be in anybody's actual yard. It will be within the right-of-way. The right-of-way along there is 60 feet wide the, the whole way around. And so on, on that particular roadway, North Vernonia Road, the cross-section shows the street and then the sidewalk to be separated. So the sidewalk's back against the property line with a buffer strip in between the roadway and the actual sidewalk location. So that's the way the majority of the sidewalk is designed, is to be separated from the roadway. This project, as discussed in multiple council meetings, was specifically to add pedestrian safety to that roadway. It was not meant to widen the roads. We certainly don't have the budget to widen the roads. This would be a project that would be, if we were to widen the roads, it would be something comparable to what the Gable Road Project was. It included all the bike lanes and curbs and the whole nine yards. That project cost over $3.2 million. We don't have $3.2 million to put into this project, and that was, the Gable Road Project was also funded, the majority of that was funded by a grant through ODOT, about $2.8 million of the 3.2 was through a grant. So we don't have the luxury of having that much funding to put into this road at this time. That is certainly something that we would, you know, try to find a future funding source to be able to improve the roadway out to the full design standard. But this particular project was aimed specifically to provide that interconnectivity between existing sidewalks, new subdivisions, the park, and, and other services as it continues down North Vernonia and going down to some of the, the business sections of the city.
But this is not a temporary sidewalk. This is where the sidewalk will exist forever and doesn't preclude other updates for that road should funding become available.
Yes, you are exactly right. Thank you for, thank you for stressing that point. That this project is a forward design project so that when someday that road is widened, this sidewalk will be accommodated into that design. It is not something that is a temporary feature. This is the permanent sidewalk location. And there will be some areas where the sidewalk does meander back and forth. Again, this was discussed in some previous council meetings when we had some, we came across the issue with, if we just stuck with the design, the standard, the cross-section that says roadway, landscape strip, sidewalks on both sides, we would end up taking out a huge amount of mature trees, healthy trees. So there are several locations where that sidewalk will meander in to where it will eventually be up against the roadway. But again, as you just mentioned, this is a, a forward design, so it's, it took that into account. If this was going to be up against the road, it's going to be in its permanent location.
So this is what it looks like when we do stuff, what I call it as à la carte, a little time.
Yeah, it is kind of an à la carte project.
Yeah. It allows, you know, we do a little bit at a time.
A little bit at a time as, as we can afford. But we didn't ignore the roadway completely. We are doing a couple of things along with this project. Number one, we are adding permanent radar speed display signs going in both directions approaching the 90-degree corner. So those tend to calm traffic and keep speeds down. And we are also adding a flashing beacon enhanced crosswalk at a new crosswalk mid-block that will take pedestrians from one side of the road to the other end and into Campbell Park. So it'll be right in that Campbell Park area there and a much safer place to cross than where people have been attempting to cross in the past, which is usually at the corners, which has the absolute worst sight distance along that whole roadway.
And this is all response to multiple parent complaints about safety on this road?
We, we did have people come and testify at council meetings, and it's been a project that we have looked at in the past as far as trying to find grant funding for. We weren't successful in, in getting a grant for this project, but we do have SDC funding for this. It is eligible for SDC funding, and we were also able to use some of our state allocated surface transportation grant program funds for this as well.
So, and then just to kind of piggyback onto that conversation with the upgrades happening at Campbell Park, this will facilitate people walking to school, to McBride School or to the high school to be able to have a safe route to school to connect to the other projects.
Yes, because it takes you right down into existing subdivisions with existing sidewalk systems that connect into, into, over to Columbia Boulevard, so it'd be right next to McBride School, continuing on down Vernonia Road out to the highway, down Columbia Boulevard. It's, it. It'll provide a, a lot of additional pedestrian routes.
Scary corner.
Yeah.
Anyways, that was just, I just wanted to clarify some of that stuff with the sidewalks.
Thank you.
You know, there's stuff out there and people seem, you know, surveyors and stuff, and they see stuff in the news and they, I want to make sure that all the, all of the explanations you've given me are made public.
Yes. We just sent out, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Well, while we're on sidewalks, I'd really like to have you explain how Gable Road and Columbia Boulevard are going to link up and where, what will happen to that intersection in terms of, of, of traffic man, management and pedestrian management. My understanding is that the sidewalk on Columbia Boulevard will be on the north side? Is that correct?
It will be on the south side.
On the south side. Then where will be, then to, for safe routes, the, will there be any pedestrian crossings other than Sykes and Columbia Boulevard?
No, there will not be any new pedestrian crossings, but the existing pedestrian crossings will be enhanced to provide more safety measures. So for example, at Sykes Road, where it's a fairly long crossing because of the right-hand turn lane, if you are westbound on Sykes Road, there's just a painted refuge area right now. That is going to become a raised, curved, concreted area with the pedestrian passage, so it provides a nice pedestrian haven there as you're crossing that long crosswalk. Also, the crossing in front of McBride School will have a new flashing beacon, so similar to what they've installed at the high school.
Okay.
Which is also the same type of flasher that we will have on North Vernonia at the Campbell Park Crossing.
I have one other question or remark. If my children lived in, around the proximity of Columbia Boulevard and Sykes Road in that area, and they need, they wanted to walk to high school, to the high school, they would proceed, I would imagine, then, if the sidewalk is in place, they would proceed down the sidewalk on Columbia Boulevard. Would they need to go all the way to that intersection of Gable Road, or do I understand that there is a path that shortcuts over to Gable Road? Are you familiar with that?
There, there is a path that does shortcut. It's closer down to the highway. It cuts through some developed properties, but as those properties develop, the Planning Department was very aware of where those kids were utilizing to go through, and so they obtained easements to make sure that that pathway was kept available and open. So as the property developed, they, there's actually fences that go along both sides with the pathway in between the properties on the front on Gable Road, and then it crosses through an easement and out onto a, another public roadway.
That was very insightful to, for the Planning Commission to grant that, and I applaud them for maintaining a safe route for the kids and a, a logical route for the kids to get to school and get to school on time and safely.
Yeah, that was a, a good, good understanding of how the property was used and a, a good way to maintain that for them.
Can I speak about that briefly?
Yes. Well, it's fine with me.
Yes, Jacob.
Yes.
So that, that property, when Associate Planner Dimsho first got on board, of course, as a RARE, her main objective was the Parks and Trails Master Plan. And so even before that, we kind of had a loose inventory of trails and, you know, we helped feed that information to Jenny so that those connections were identified on that plan, and that gave us the firepower, if you will, to make sure we got those easements in place.
Thank you, Jacob. And thank you, Sue.
Yeah. So I have a couple of slides here that just highlight some of the projects, and we've talked about most of these already, but Gable Road, that is now, as I said, mostly complete other than some landscaping. There'll still be several trees. I think there's like 70 trees that will be planted along there in the fall when the, when it's more planting season. And I know the landscapers have been going through and working on some of the areas in that landscape strip there. Now, Matt, we could put up those slides if you had an opportunity to do that. Oh, you're muted. Sorry.
You will have to un-share your screen.
Un-share me. Okay. How do I un-share? You are sharing. Stop share. Okay.
There you go.
So the county just sent me these photos that hopefully Matt can get up. There we go, that they had a drone take of the newly completed Gable Road. It looks pretty nice.
It's really nice.
All the new ADA ramps, the, the new, there's two of those enhanced crossings with the, the flashing beacons in front of the high school. So there you go. Okay, back to share screen. Oops. Okay, I still have some slides if I can get back to sharing.
You should be able to now.
Okay. Okay, can you guys see that again?
Yes.
Okay, great. So Gable Road, pretty much done. It was about a three-quarter mile project, just a little less than that actually. As I mentioned, it was a, a grant that was applied for jointly. As I mentioned, it was a grant that was applied for jointly with Columbia County and the city clear back in two thousand and twelve. That's how long it took for the funding to become available and for the project to actually get going. So we've been working on this for a really, really, really long time. And as I mentioned before, the total amount of the project was right about three point two million dollars, but the vast majority of that, almost three million dollars, two point eight million dollars was a grant. So that's the only way we were going to be able to, the county or the city was going to be able to get this project completed. The North Vernonia Road project, and thank you, Councilor Carlson, for bringing up several of the points on the sidewalk on this project. Also want to mention that we did mail out some flyers to all of the property owners that abut, directly abut North Vernonia Road along the alignment of the project and also on all of the, the little side streets, the dead-end streets that where there's just access off of North Vernonia, just to let them know that the project is coming, the extent of the project and some of the key factors of the project. One of those being that it is a forward design as far as being compatible with future road improvements, the enhanced crosswalk and the speed radar signs that will be installed. The Safe Routes to School Sidewalk Project, again, as mentioned earlier, this is being designed right now for the sidewalk. Another grant project that we were fortunate enough, fortunate enough to receive through the Safe Routes to School program. And we'll be connecting on right to that Gable Road sidewalk, right where it ends there, the Columbia Boulevard intersection, coming up the side of the south side of Columbia Boulevard and up to Sykes Road. And then some of those intersection improvements at the Sykes Road and the school crossing there. And the Parks Department, we're proud of our parks. We struggle sometimes to keep everything moving there as quickly as we would like to, just because of the shortage of staff that we have right now, not being able to get the summer helpers that we've usually had. So we've had a little, a little bit of challenge trying to keep all of the juggling balls in the air with the parks, but we, they just do a great job. And the guys out there are really, really dedicated to what they do. So I'm real proud of, of what our parks are. We have some beautiful areas in our parks. What we have planned for this coming year is in Campbell Park, we talked about that just a little bit ago, but this will be so nice to get some functional tennis courts out there and they will, all of the courts will be striped for multiple sports. So we'll have, the tennis will also accommodate pickleball and we'll have the basketball courts and also volleyball with the new courts. Most likely, the, the courts won't be installed until next year, but it will depend on the schedule of the contractor once that is selected. We also have scheduled new play equipment for McCormick Park that will pretty much double the size of the play equipment that's out there right now. We're still waiting to find out what our final grant award is through the Blazers Moda Assist Program. And with that funding, we'll be able to purchase additional all-abilities playground equipment to go along with the play structure there. So we should have a really, really nice playground area once this project is complete. We hope to get this installed next summer or it'd be nice if we could do it before the summer. But again, playground equipment installers are hard to find and also they're scheduled way far out. So we, once we are able to get a total amount that we can work with as far as the cost, then we'll be working with, we want to get some community input on the type of playground equipment that we choose. And then we'll be working as quickly as we can to get that installed. We also still have the Godfrey Park upgrades to work on. It's just been a challenge with the, the lack of staffing and the time to be able to put into that particular project. And then we have a very dedicated group at the Dalton Lake Nature Preserve that's done a great job in getting some donations for some enhancements at the preserve of either signage around the trails. They've also got donated materials and labor to build a kiosk. We'll have two of those, one at each entrance to the nature preserve that just has some information about the types of wildlife and foliage that are present in the preserve and just some general rules, no campfires, no overnight camping and things like that. We also will have a couple of benches and we're getting a bike rack donated and that will be down at the main entrance off of Fourth Street coming into Columbia City. Most of these projects are being done with either grant funds or with donations.
Hey, Sue?
Yeah.
So on the McCormick Park play structure?
Yeah.
When are we going to start with the public outreach for what kind of equipment we want to see there? Because I think we need to start sooner than later so we can have it up hopefully for next year.
Yes.
So what is the thinking on staff on getting that going because?
Yeah. We, we, we need to know what we have to work with because we could get all kinds of ideas, but until we know what we can afford and be able to.
We're guaranteed fifty, but we're not sure if it's more than that on the Moda Assist. Is that correct?
I don't believe that that's the guaranteed amount. The, the community last year that won got somewhere in the thirty thousand dollar range.
Forget what it was. There was a guaranteed amount, but it was potentially maybe more than it.
Yeah, it, when the season first was stalled, we were right about the twenty-five thousand dollar range. And so they said that they would, you know, make it good to match similar amounts that have been provided to other communities in the past. And I, I recall that the community that won last year got somewhere around thirty-three thousand.
Okay, so, and so we're also, that's for the all-abilities equipment.
Yes, that will be specifically dedicated for the all-abilities.
Yeah, and then we're also replacing some of our equipment too.
Oh, yes, yes.
I think we should really start at least knowing even a low number or around about because can we use SDCs for some of that?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we just go ahead and start planning for that? I mean, let's just go ahead and have a general ballpark and.
Sure.
Have a number. That way we can get going on it because I'm looking at the veteran side's been redone and when that's redone, it's going to be like a whole new park down there.
Oh, it's going to be beautiful, yeah.
It'd be nice to have it sometime mid-spring because that's being realistic.
I had a question about McCormick Park. I've been there a few times this year and I don't know if this is a new thing because remember the cannon was gone for a while and then it reappeared. And thank you, thank you, thank you that it is attached firmly to the ground and can't move. But I noticed that kids are climbing all over it and jumping off of it. And I'm concerned on top of that paving surface that there's no signage there like we've done, like at Godfrey Park, that this is not a play structure, this is not whatever. And so, I mean, parents are just watching their kids climb all over that display and it's just a little bit, you know, somebody cuts themselves or slices open their face and they're going to think that we were negligent in having that in the park. So I don't know if there should be something there to tell people that or if people have to be reminded to be parents.
Councilor Carlson, thank you for saying something about that because I've been an advocate of getting signage by that cannon, you know, with the veterans and establishing a history of that cannon, what it was used for, how it got here, that, those kinds of things. And then along with that, please do not climb on the, on, you know, on the cannon, on the halitzer. So, yeah, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of people that we can acknowledge their efforts in bringing that cannon forward to the park. Most recently, the Hellers who donated their time and materials to decommission the, the cannon. Anyway, there's, there's a lot to a signage and with that, a reminder just not to climb on the, on the halitzer. It might go off.
Yeah, I was, I guess, I was taken aback because I was, you know, I'll show my age here that that's always been, growing up, that was a hallowed space. You didn't climb all over people's memorials. And I just think to, more ways to delineate that is not a play area, but that is a special place. And I think that some, whatever signage it is that kind of conveys the gravity of the work that's been done and the sacrifices that are made, been made every day by our young men and women.
So just, I just want to come back to my, my, my point before. I wanted to refer to Council President Morton that maybe he could work with Sue and the Parks Commission to come up with a few ideas for the Moda Assist and our playground equipment and, and hopefully they could wheelhouse that little forum, the Parks Commission could as far as design for our playground equipment coming in there and get the ball rolling so we can, we can have it up and going.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely want to do that.
Thank you.
We'll get that on the agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis. Yep, thank you very much.
Perfect thing for our next Parks Commission agenda. Again, we've mentioned this before, but we've got the Campbell Park sport courts coming and probably to be installed next spring, summer. Again, just depending on the contractors, when we are able to select a contractor on their schedule. And this is another grant-funded project, mostly grant and then in-kind work for the majority of the city's portion of the costs. And then, as we were just discussing, the McCormick Park play structure is the, the last big project that we have in the works right now. So that's about all I had unless anybody had any questions.
Well, we, we beat you up during instead of saving it for the end.
Right, no, I, I'm glad you ask questions as they come to mind.
Well, because when the picture's up there, it makes more sense when the picture's there.
I'm saving mine to the end.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. One thing on the.
Comments.
One thing on the, on the McCormick Park project with the new play structure, which will go, well, you know where the old one is, but we're going to be doing probably more of a carpet type of fall protection rather than the chips, something that's probably a little bit easier to maintain over time. Costs a tiny bit more to put it in to begin with, but you don't have the continual purchasing of the new chips all the time. And it looks a lot nicer. And you can get it in all kinds of colors.
Yes.
But not orange or not, it doesn't come in green and yellow, sorry.
Good, yes. Dang it. Good way to spend the SDCs if needed, Sue, if we need, you know, I think we just kind of.
Yes.
About and definitely.
With all the squishy ground over there, the, the foam surface makes a way better statement, that way better answer than the chips.
Yep.
Ground stays wet until August.
Exactly, okay. Matt, I'm going to give the screen back to you.
Can I make a comment while we're on this subject?
Yep.
So just want to talk about SDCs a little bit, system development charges. I know this reason it's kind of, it's been on my watch list ever since I've been on the council. And I know a lot of the contractors out there have catatized me for trying to raise the SDC charges because it raises the price of houses and they want to make whatever they can on a house. But this is why there's no sidewalks in the city, there's no crosswalks, there's no signage, there's not as much at the parks as there should be. All these things come from SDC charges, system development charges. And if you don't collect them now, or since they, they didn't do that a lot in the past, now it costs four to five to ten times as much as it would have at the time when they should have built them and whatnot. So if anybody wants to complain about SDC charges, then, you know, if you want a, a city that doesn't have sidewalks and nice things to be in for a community, then, yeah, we can do away with them. So just wanted to throw that out there for everybody.
Yeah, good point, Keith. I mean, that's what they're, that's why they're there is, that's why you pay the money you pay to build.
So, yeah, I wanted to talk about it now because I'm not going to get re-elected, so they can't come after me again.
All right, now's the time.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so we're going to talk about the RFP for Tourism Coordination. So.
Do you want me to take this one for?
Yeah, go ahead and take it.
Kick it off? All right, so in your packet there, we included a, the copy of the most recent request for proposals, RFP for Events Management Coordination. I thought it might be good to offer some kind of context and history of how we got, why we're looking at that and not something else, you know, and we, the city's began its tourism program with the implementation of the hotel motel tax back in two thousand and two, you know, eighteen years later today. You know, as we fast forward through all that, that history right there, you know, most of that, those years, we, those funds were pretty limited. It was just limited to the, what was collected by the hotel receipts, the room stays. And we had a, they hired a tourism director and they had a commission. For the most part, it paid for the, just, just about that, there was a, the tourism director, a, you know, a few, few projects now and then, and the rest of it was banked for a future convention center or things over time. And, you know, from the community impact, it was largely ineffective in my, my perspective, if the council made the decision to go to a different model where we're not only continuing with the collection of the room fees, but we're going to an event-based model where there's sponsorships and event revenues and, you know, over the past four, five years, you know, hiring, taking the administrative piece of that in-house under, under my department or community development and hiring a contractor relationship to perform services related to events, we've doubled, tripled the, you know, the revenue and the expenditures to go with that. But, you know, the real benefit, I think, success, this program is seen as, and if, you know, community impact is look up and down First Street pretty much any day of the week, you know, five years ago, there were a lot of days there was almost nobody parked on the street and some days, you know, we're, have, you know, international recognition for Halloween and it's, I think there's a sense of community pride that goes along with this and it's been a really, you know, a good move and a valuable investment to make that shift. But, you know, and, and why do we do it? You know, they, it's about local business, it's about economic development, it's about attracting new businesses like the hotel and the multi-use buildings that we're planning for for the veneer property. We need that critical mass of people and energy and the positive community, you know, recognition from the outside world to really make things go, get that investment down. So, you know, ETC has been doing that the last four years and my view, fairly amazingly. But, you know, it's good, good to stop and stop and check, look at, look at the, the request for proposal, the, the current services, you know, way the contract's set up now, it does, it's renewed automatically unless the council wants to do something different and you've expressed an interest in talking about it. So we're here today to talk about it. Going through the RFP here, it's essentially set up as a model where there's four major events, Halloween, Christmas tree lighting, Fourth of July and Thirteen Nights on the River. There's a revenue or there's an expenditure expectation and then there's also a, a sponsorship from that revenue expectation from the contractor. Those have changed. She's added a lot of activities and things, but, you know, all, you know, all the while communicating with. in all the while communicating with myself and the city council about this, having the revenue cover the expenditures as long as it brought activities to the community.
John, look at it a couple of things. I was looking at a personal services agreement for something else. And there's a, in this one, a 4.2, it says, the contractor shall keep reasonable records of the work performed in to this agreement and provide monthly detailed billings. I particularly would like to have an audit of the last three years of tourism so the council can be assured of what was spent, what came in and have it done by an outside party. So we don't have any comments that, oh, we didn't do it right. What we paid for rent, what we paid for materials, what we paid for personnel, how much time the city through its maintenance group provided. As I say, I would like outside accountant to verify everything that's been done. Could that be put in the RFP so the people signing up would know exactly what kind of monies and how it's being handled?
So typically when we audit things at the city, we don't do a everything audit. That that would be very cost prohibitive if they do a sample audit.
This is a particular place because we have an outside person basically acting as a department of the city. I think just for the view of honesty, it should be an outside accountant. I know it would be costly, but it does clean up the air about people questioning anything.
I think what Counselor Topaz is asking in terms of efficiency is getting on our annual accountant on our, when we have our annual audit. And we have that once a year. And I think Counselor Topaz is asking that if he, if that audit can concern itself into tourism a bit. I'm not certain how thorough and how costly that would be. But it seems to me like we could, we could build that into our annual audit and the, and with that audit report that comes back and it's very complete. So I, I think, I think Counselor Topaz, I think, has, has a good point. And I think that, and just in terms of efficiency, that we could possibly, and I don't know if Matt is listening to this or not, I think he is, you know, ask the auditor to take a special look at, at tourism. Matt, what's your, what's your comment on that?
I will at least let the council know that the auditors that the city uses do look at revenue and expenses for every fund, including tourism. And they do spot check invoices and expenses and accounts payable and revenue items to ensure that they go to the right account, that they're processed correctly. We have the right retention records. In my opinion, it is already audited. We receive that in the final audit report that covers the tourism fund. Now, if the city council wants to do a separate audit outside of our normal audit, it depends on how deep down the wormhole you want to go. If I had been an accountant, I could charge you 150 to 200 upwards of $300 an hour to go through every single invoice and every single penny that is spent on anything you want. And I will take as much time as I need to get every single receipt from E2C and the company. If you want to go down that road, it's going to cost thousands of dollars. And thousands probably in the 15 to 20. And I don't think that it's going to show or prove anything that I believe Counselor Topaz or some of the community members may try and point to that I disagree with.
Well, Matt, the reason I'm bringing this up, I'm looking at, as I say, another personal service agreement with another company. And they say we should have monthly billings.
And we do get monthly reports from Tina as far as invoices and receipts. If I request them for any expenses that I see that jump out at me that seem odd or that don't seem appropriate, I will ask Tina for those receipts and inquire if something does. But we do get monthly, if not bi weekly or so invoices from Tina Curry and her E2C company that have at least satisfied what my opinion would be as an appropriate use of funds.
Well, I'm bringing this up because I know Sue Nelson tells me how many gallons of gas, how many mower blades are spent on the monthly check from her department. I would basically like to have that public list from the tourism department to basically match what Sue Nelson does.
And we've had, we've had multiple public records requests to see invoices from E2C in the past. Those have been done by at least two community members that I know of firsthand that have requested every single invoice that E2C has contributed to the city of St. Helens that we have paid. And we have given those records to them and nothing has come of it. And there's a reason why.
I'm not worried about something come of it. I just want to clear the air so we don't keep getting these questions that we're doing things under the table. And again, with Sue Nelson and her, we fixed three bumpers on the truck and all this. Sometimes it gets a boring minutia of lots and lots of little bills. But I think the public would like to see those lots and lots of little bills from tourism. Now, the fact that we use a city tax system, yes, it is only from hotels, but I think the citizens of St. Helens would like to see how their tax money, even though it's dedicated.
It's not their tax money unless you stayed at a hotel within the city of St. Helens, Steve. You didn't pay any of that tax money.
So that's where it's confusing. Let me break this down just a little bit, okay? Let me just have just a moment here. We had talked about in our last tourism real joint meeting with a bunch of people that we would try to figure out what we spent as far as policing and public works time so we could have an idea of what is actually dollar wise being spent. And we did a fairly decent job, but we were going to do even a thorougher job this go around. Hence, the pandemic happened. Then the 13 nights isn't what it used to be. Even Halloween Town's not going to be what it used to be. It, it's going to be very hard to audit this year to compare to the future years or years past because it's just a very much different thing. And so when, and what Matt is speaking of is you're right that Sue Nelson does give account for every blade. But for the Emerson and Sons Construction Company that we're awarding a contract to of $590,000, who is a subcontractor, which Tina Curry is, a subcontractor to the city. And she does provide the city with receipts. You're asking for every little receipt that she even has. And and apparently that has happened prior to. But that's where I think the confusion is. And it is not tax dollars. It is to, it is the hotel tax money that comes from tourism that can only be spent on tourism. It can't be spent anywhere else. No roads, no lighting, no upgrades to a park, no, no to the rec program. That's, you know, I mean, we're always looking for money for the rec program. If we could, I would, trust me, but we can't.
And if you do want to get into.
Let me explain the tax business. The tax, which is comes from tourists, is under the auspices that the city leveled it. It isn't coming from city people, but the city mechanism is what allowed the tax to be collected. That's all I'm saying. That's why I'm saying it's our tax, not our citizens are paying the tax. I'm saying that our mechanism allowed the tax to be collected. That's what I'm saying, our tax.
Your state guidelines, we.
I agree, I agree. By the way, if the fact is, it's the people who put it in motion. And I just want to make sure.
I also.
Which is coming.
I would also like to make the council aware that the contract that it currently has with with E2C is not a personnel services contract that Counselor Topaz is pulling, which is probably one of our more basic personnel contracts that he pulled with another agency. It is not specifically the contract that we have with E2C. And there are specific parameters that say whether or not we can do that type of audit and ask for stuff. It is specifically written in the contract for E2C that she doesn't have to provide that stuff. She does whenever I have asked for it. She's never had a problem with it. But if that is something that you wish to do as a council, that is something you will have to add specifically in a new contract with E2C.
And also part of our discussion at that time of, also was to put the RFP out in July. And we are past that deadline is when we, we actually said the first of July with the pandemic, it was an oversight, there was a lot going on in July. You got to remember, June was very, very, very busy, just a lot of stuff going on. I think the first week of June was very extremely busy for the city of St. Helens. If I recall, I was working my butt off along with staff just trying to roll with all the changes and graduations and everything that was going on at that time.
Oh, you make a very good point, Mayor, that in the new RFP, I think this change ought to be made from what we presently have that Matt pointed out. I think that's a good point to put into the RFP.
John Walsh, I'm going to come back to you. It got sideways really fast.
Well, the purpose of this is to review this RFP to see if you want to continue it or if you want to amend it or if you want to go out for a new one. And if you, if you want to go out, well, I guess in any case, if there's the issue of auditing financial records is area of concern that we need to examine the, the city contractor relationship too because there's some, some barriers there as well. We're not, we don't go too deep into other people's businesses.
Yeah, very important to remember that she is a contractor and not an employee.
Yeah. Definitely want to look at a little bit closer, the RFP and maybe tweak it a little bit, especially in the day of pandemic, she was, what's the word I'm looking for? Tina didn't get paid for two months. What's the word I'm looking for? Help me out.
Self for load.
Furloughed?
Yeah, for load herself for two months. But maybe that's something be written in the contract that if it's, you know, there may be a automatic furlough depending on with this day and age. You never know that the city has the ability to, even though she did it self and that was cool, but the city have the, has the ability to furlough if services are not needed. Because I think that's vitally important. I think it just is in this day and age.
Because who knows what next year will be?
We don't know, yeah. Never seen this one coming.
To, to the concept, just speaking of the RFP, I guess when we go out for bid for things, we get a budget. And so I guess I understand that tourism flows, like you have to get stuff in March for October. So it might be nice to have like, you know, whether it is, you know, projected expenses, projected revenue ahead of the year. And so to see that when revenue fell, I knew because she reported revenue fell, so she made cut. But it's like, if we don't have that out there, just as a public entity, so people know projected tourism expenses, just for easy numbers, 75,000. Well, revenue is going to be off, so we're going to have to cut it by 20%. So it's not like every single candle, every single pumpkin, but just like an overview so people know when we're on budget, when we're over budget, that kind of thing. So they have an idea of where we're going. And I don't know if that would be appropriate in this kind of contract.
Yeah, so can we, definitely we'd want to put out an RFP, John, but we just wanted to be able to look at it, tweak it a little bit. Do we need to put a little more time on our next agenda to have this discussion and have the? I think that's probably the best way to go.
I think, I think give it, give it over to the staff so that they can mull it over and then get a report from them on our next council meeting. And we can have a discussion at our, at our work session.
Great idea because they kind of got an idea of what we're talking about now. Yep. I think it's a good idea.
That, if I could, yeah, we'll consider, make some considerations for the auditing issues or financial accountability. But I wanted to compare tourism to building department. For years and years, the building department was expected to recover all of its expenses. And it was, you know, whether it came up, was it off year or is it bump per year? You know, some of your years barely covered expenses. Most years it was, you know, maybe a little bit short and we were boned at money and you know, trying to get that department to be accountable. And then, you know, at some point, we recognize that that department is important to the economic development and continuation of services to our community. And we made it part of just the general fund services. So it wasn't getting, getting strung out on the string there and getting beat on every year. And tourism, I see it's kind of the same way. It's, it's valuable enough to the community that it's more than just the hotel. And if we judge it just by hotel revenue, you know, we're, it's only about a third of the revenue that comes into it. So.
Yeah.
It was just a framing, framing up the issue, I suppose, but.
How long ago was it? How long ago was the building department, its own department? Because that was obviously before me.
Yeah, five or six years ago. Yeah.
Yep.
So we'll come back with you at the next workshop with something revised. Take a look at it.
Sounds good.
My biggest problem out here on the street is transparency. No matter what it is, if we know what it is, it's one thing. If we don't know what it is, rumors have a great time doing damage to us. So we're trying to be as transparent as possible.
Yeah, that's the whole point of these meetings. I definitely agree with you. So let's go ahead and go on to our next item, which is Strategic Action Plan Updates.
I only have one quick update for you is that on your next council meeting, Sherry from the Oregon Main Street Program will be attending and doing a presentation on the Main Street Program. If you'll remember, she, we did a community survey that we helped push out. And then I believe Sherry was also trying to get ahold of all of the council members to talk about Shedco and Main Street and their future and purpose. And so Sherry did give their, her initial report to Shedco last week or so. She also gave that same report to myself and John on a separate conversation later last week. And so she will come give that same presentation to you as a council along with John and I will have a staff recommendation for you on how to move forward. That's the only update I got.
Good, all right. Let's get a report from John Walsh.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So just to recap of this afternoon, this evening, I suppose, the, at 6 o'clock, we have the Urban Renewal Agency meeting on the proposed plan amendment. And then at 6:30, there's a public hearing on the Lard Roadland, land use there, zoning. And then at 7 o'clock, the regular meeting. Some of you heard some of this before, but I'll, I'll recap it. The, you know, we've been working on securing funding for the waterfront. Those loans and grants are all submitted. We should have knowledge of success about that sometime in November, mid-November, which coincides with about the time that the notice of awards go out. So our focus has been on getting the funding set up because it's a little longer glide path than the, the services that we're trying to get, get funded there. We're also at the same path, working on the the engineering and landscape architecture firms for the boardwalk and park improvements and engineering for the roadway and utility extensions on the veneer property. So that is set to, our goal is to have that announcement ready for your authorization early, early to mid-October and out in November. And then just kind of line up with the funding. So when we, when the notice of a funding announcement comes out, we know what we're going to target, steer it hard services towards. The partialization plan at the mill is, we received some news from DLCV, Land Conservation and Development, the funder of that project. We are probably about 90% through that project and they are going through some major cutbacks. And they're essentially cutting us off on the last $10,000 and $6,000 of, of work for funding that, that grant because they need it to balance the state's budget. So we're wrapping that up. The only outstanding issue is the infrastructure financing plan. And we think we have enough funds and other departments that we can get that last little piece together to move forward defining, advance that finding work.
Good.
The recruitment for the public works director is open. It's been open. I don't have the, I'll have an update for you on the next applicant, applicant cutoff is. Take a look at the applications for the council. So we largely repeat the processes before. So we largely repeat the processes before. Also working with the building official on updating the building inspector position. We actually have three building inspector positions based on a tiered model and one and two and a three based off your your state qualifications and skill sets, but it's, and they're old enough that most everything's changed about those. So we're looking at updating the proper language, proper codes, um, running through the HR processes. We'll have that updated building inspector, maybe by the next meeting, we'll target that, but maybe one, one after that. Um, we're continuing to work with CCT and the COVID response and county, we're with the county on that as well. It's going well. Working with South County Lab, Labertive, which is something Rachel Berry's been kind of spear spearheading. It's, it's all of the county administrators become, we meet once a month and, and, you know, talk about areas of many concern. We're going to have a report back to our councils here, coming up with probably the next meeting. Um, make an announcement about, um, city manager, Michael Sykes at, uh, City of Skapu, since leading his city manager career and taking a position at the Columbia River P U D. Is their executive director. And I think it's first day of today. So welcome him to that. We're welcome to a good relationship with P U D and maybe we won't get seventy-two percent rate increases on our. So at the, earlier in the week, I met with Mal Foster and talked, went, walked through all of the projects, the status of all projects. And specifically the phase one delivery report for the, the good repurposing. And we'd like to come to the council at the next meeting, sixteen in the workshop to just talk, talk about that project specifically, talk about all the other projects they have going on. And more specifically with the phase one report, we'll talk about the community engagement, you know, what's, what's going to be effective in this world of COVID and what the council sees as a strategy on that. We have communication people that are on the team and it's just, I think we need to, I'll, I'll talk about it. I'll hear the same information. Come up with a plan.
Yeah, I, I'm going to leave, uh, hopefully we'll leave a pretty good chunk. Expect that to be hour and a half long. I would guess, probably with discussions.
I don't think we're turning pages on the three hundred page report. So hopefully it's more high level than that, but.
Yeah. All right. Maybe an hour.
Thirty to forty minutes. I was hoping thirty, thirty minutes.
I know you're, oh. I just have a feeling.
So the league, okay, the League of Oregon Cities Conference is this year is, is digital or virtual. It is October fourteenth and fifteenth. If you need any councillor's desire to attend, let, let me know. We can get you registered. Councillor Morton, if you recall, has been voted as the voting delegate unless some reason you couldn't make it and the, it would reassign.
First.
I think you missed that meeting. The, uh, so last week we're out on site with some people from the Oregon Brownfields Conference and we're filming a short film with a film developer on the veneer property. We're going to be featured at the Oregon Brownfields Conference on October fifth and sixth as, uh, as part of a series of, you know, meaningful brownfield redevelopment or just telling our story about St. Helens. Part of a bigger project.
Good.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Came out the one day it was raining sideways and blowing, but we got it done. So. And then there, circle back to the Halloween and safety plan. There is a press release. It's scheduled to go out. There's immediate release, media blast going out to the local and the region beyond radio spots and things about the safety and the protocols for Halloween this year.
Okay. Anything else?
Unless you have questions.
Um, I had a question, Mr. Mayor. I just see some unusual people in our audience today and I was surprised. I thought there was something to do with the school on the agenda. So I just didn't know if there was something else.
Executive session.
Okay, my bad.
Yes. You're very observant, Tony. You are very, very observant.
I'm checking all the agendas. I'm going, what are these people doing in the room?
So, um, I will state that, uh, if you heard John Walsh's, uh, beginning of his report that was talks about the waterfront and the boardwalk design and, and we are moving forward. This is really happening. We are, he, what he was addressing was that we're going to have stuff in place in order to move forward and get this, uh, first phase of our boardwalk and our park extension, um, going. So it is happening. It's becoming a reality. The waterfront is becoming a reality, folks. So I'm very, very enthused about that. Look forward to being a, um, helping that along best we can and, and definitely need your input. So.
And enough time to temper, temper buildings.
Well, yeah. Great job, John. Okay. Any other, uh, business is the last thing on my agenda. Other business, anybody? Okay. I just want to remind everybody, we're going to take a ten minute break and then we'll be going into the executive session as announced. One nine two six six zero two E real property and H consulting with council potential litigation. So with that, I'm going to adjourn.